Is seven thirty-seven. I would ask everyone to silence their cellphones and look around and note the locations of the emergency exits. I would like to take a moment of silence for some staff members who have lost relatives this past week and also for Fred Stewart, fireman in town. Please stand for the election.
Our allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In accordance with the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Act, a public notice of this meeting has been sent to board members, all district schools, the Herald News, the Trends, The Record, Aim West Milford, The Messenger, West Milford Town Hall, County Superintendent's Office, the Board Attorney, and Cablevision of Warwick, and has been posted in the Administration Building. Copies of the board meeting calendar resolution were provided to all local media, Town Hall, Township Library, and all district schools. Roll call, please, Mrs. Francisco.
Mr. Bailey? Mr. Dever?
Here.
Mr. Drew?
Here.
Mrs. Dwight?
Here.
Mr. Foodie?
Present.
Mr. Huber?
Here.
Mrs. O'Brien? Mr. Robbins?
Mr. Robbins called me. He's in an interview and he wasn't sure if he was gonna be here.
I think Mrs. O'Brien will be here about a half hour.
Okay.
Mr. Schultz?
Glenn, would you mind reading the executive session resolution, please?
The motion to approve the following resolution. The Board went to executive session for approximately sixty minutes for the purpose of discussing HIV, personnel, negotiations, and matters of attorney-client privilege. The executive session minutes will not be released until such time and privilege or confidentiality is no longer applicable.
Just so we're clear that if we pass the motion as it's written, we're going to executive session right now because there's no time in the future.
Oh.
Glenn, you should put a time.
All right.
Okay, so at nine o'clock. Jamie, let's say at nine o'clock.
Okay, thank you. I need a second.
I have a quick question. Can we move that up to eight-thirty PM? Is it possible to do that?
It's possible.
Well, we could.
Good.
If we're not done with the... I would second in eight-thirty if you would amend that.
Well, we can go in early any day if we're done anyway.
Okay.
So do I have a second?
One second.
Thank you, Terry. Is this for nine o'clock?
Okay.
Do you want to make a motion, Jamie, to amend it to eight-thirty?
I would like to make a motion to amend it to eight-thirty if possible.
Do we have a second for Jamie's Maryland? Yes, okay. Any discussion?
It's necessary.
Do I need to do a roll call?
No, you can do it all in favor.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Let's just keep in mind that if it goes past eight-thirty and then presentations are still on.
Yep, okay. All right, all in favor of the executive session resolution for eight-thirty? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Want to see what they have done? Yeah.
All right, Dr. Anamon, Superintendent's report, please.
Good evening, everybody. Just want to give our monthly progress towards our district goals and also monthly progress towards our school goals and our department goals. We went over this, the board met in May to set up district goals for the sixteen-seventeen school year. We spent the summer months meeting with the administration to come up with some school goals and department goals. We sort of drilled down a little more detail and I want to, met with the administration maybe two weeks ago and they gave us some updates about where they are. We're about a quarter of the way through the school year. First marking period is ending, I think, this week or maybe last weekend ended. So we're about officially a quarter of the way through the year and I'll update the board. Not on every single thing we're doing because I understand we have a meeting to get to, but I will give you some highlights thus far and I'll try and touch on different schools, different departments, different grade levels, et cetera. So under District Goal One, which is differentiated instruction, one of the goals at the high school was to assess and plan for the implementation of the Advanced Placement Capstone Program at West Milford Township High School for the seventeen-eighteen school year. So earlier this year, the administration at the high school met the principals, assistant principals, supervisor, director of education, and we brainstormed some possible things we could do with this program. We had representatives from the college board, the group that administers the program, come into our high school. We had one site visit already to Randolph High School and I believe he, I believe we have one more site, Mount Olive, High Point Regional, already set up. We submitted our application and just yesterday we heard from the college board that we were approved to have the Advanced Placement Capstone Project in West Milford High School for next school year. So this is a very rigorous program. It involves two additional AP courses, AP research, and AP seminar, and it really pushes our students right now. We're gonna take some time from now until a little bit later into the school year to see when we should offer those courses, grades ten and eleven or grades ten and twelve. We're not sure, we're still working and we're collaborating with some administrators from other districts that are probably a year ahead of us already. They're implementing it this year. So it's a wonderful opportunity and it's two additional AP classes. They're college-type classes, so these are the courses that prepare you for college. If you're a high school student, if you have interest in attending a highly competitive college, an Ivy, a little Ivy, a highly ranked state school, a flagship university, Rutgers, University of Virginia, Michigan, those high-end schools, this is the program that helps you get to those places. So we're really happy that it's gonna give our kids a competitive leg up academically starting with the graduating class of, well, starting with the seventeen-eighteen school year. Yes.
Dr. Anamon, could the capstone research project, the summative project that these kids do, could that be a graduation, how can I say it?
Requirement?
Not a requirement, but how could, could that replace the park testing for their graduation?
Replace?
The park test for those kids?
Not to my understanding. As I now know, maybe that's something that the direction the state moves in in the future, but right now that's not an option. However, who knows what the future holds.
That shows more growth as a student than any test you could ever take. That's why we just brought that up. Okay, thank you.
So we're moving the envelope there. Just moved down to the elementary school. We have finished our Fontis and Penel benchmark reading assessments. This is the assessments that our children in grades one to six take in the fall of the year and then they take a similar measurement in the spring, so a similar assessment in the spring, so allows our teachers and administrators to measure their reading growth. Our kindergartners do it a little bit later. It's more like the winter and the spring. So we finished the initial assessment in the fall, so we have a baseline of where our children are reading now at all the elementary schools for grades one to six. We know what their Lexile score is, which helps our teachers to differentiate their instruction in the classroom. Our math department, one of our goals this year was to assess and plan for the implementation of a new pre-algebra course in grade seven at McEpin School for the seventeen-eighteen school year. This goal includes the creation of a benchmark assessment for grade six students plus a communication plan for current grade six parents. So in a nutshell, what we're looking to do for the current sixth graders going into seventh grade next year is find out, and they're coming from six different elementary schools, remember, we're gonna get a common benchmark assessment, which has been created already by our math teachers, what a gifted sixth grader would know in math, administer that test a little bit later in the school year so we can identify in each school a certain number of students and then collect them into grade seven at McEpin School where they'll be in a new advanced math class starting in seventh grade. So it really pushes our gifted students a little bit ahead and we've done things like this in the past at some of the upper grades. This brings it a little bit down into our elementary schools for grade six, has some good vertical articulation between our grade six math teachers and our grade seven math teachers. And if you, you're a current grade six parent and probably the furthest thing on your mind is college, but when you're applying to colleges and universities, one of the key elements that they look for is which math, which is the highest level math you took. Did you take, did you top off a pre-calc, calc, calc BC, which is a discrete math, whatever level, and the earlier you take algebra, that affects which math class you'll take in fourth grade. So if you take algebra in ninth grade, you can probably only get the pre-calc. If you take algebra in eighth grade, you can probably get the calc and so on and so forth. So the earlier, what we're trying to do is identify those gifted students in math in sixth grade and collect them all from McEpin so they're ready for them in seventh grade in the fall.
Dr. Anamon?
Yes.
What about those kids that are struggling? Will you be able to identify those children as well?
We probably already have through other assessments, whether it's a classroom assessment, whether it's park assessment, there's other data points we have, but this is more for the gifted end of the program. So a separate ends of the stick, I guess. Our World Languages Department has a wonderful group here and their goal was to investigate the feasibility of offering a New Jersey Department of Education bilingual diploma endorsement for select West Milford High School graduates, starting with this year, the class of seventeen. These are students who can identify, who can show a mastery of a language other than English, so Spanish, French, German, Italian. If they can prove mastery of that language, they will have a bilingual endorsement on their diploma, which, similar to the AP capstone conversation, allows our students, when they're applying for select and rigorous universities, to have a competitive edge Our second district goal was to develop and implement an effective and timely communication plan. We have blogs going on. I know at Marshall Hill, they piloted usage of an app called Remind, which helps notify parents of late bus issues, for example. I think all of our elementary schools are using that app for now. On your table here is our newest newsletter from the high school. This is our monthly Highlander news. This comes out, this is created by the high school and lists some of what we do now at the high school in color. It's on our website. There's extra copies on the Media Center stand. Our Visual Forum work department is also creating a quarterly newsletter, which is, edition one is out, edition quarterly two, edition will be out probably in a few weeks prior to our December meeting, but that's also on our website, will be shared with the entire community. So we're trying to highlight a lot of the positive things that we're doing in our district. And the third district goal has to do with developing respectful and sustainable partnerships with our parents, our community, our students, and our staff. All of our schools are involved with the National Character, Character.org group this year. They've all, they are all in the process of applying for an award. Some schools are applying for something called a promising practice, which is sort of the beginning level that they offer. The schools that have that already are going for the next level award, which is called a state school of character. And we have schools already that are a state school of character. They're applying to be a national school of character. So every one of our schools is figuring out where they were last year and trying to move one step up the ladder, weaving character education into basically everything we do. Does anybody on the board have any questions?
Yeah, going back to the AP capstone program, are you working on any partnerships with colleges so that the students that take the AP courses may get some college credits before they actually leave high school? Then they're transferable?
All public schools.
They do.
You can hire your hire.
It's part of the, well, the AP classes you take in physics, calc, et cetera, those may or may not transfer to universities depending on how many classes you're looking to transfer. They typically don't accept somebody as a sophomore, even if you've taken a lot of AP credits. They're in the business of selling new credits, so some universities have a limit as to how many credits you can transfer in. However, having that on your high school transcript in and of itself is typically advantageous, even if every single AP credit doesn't necessarily transfer into college.
Right. Okay, I just think, because I know some schools have a partnership with, let's say, Rutgers, and so you'd be like transferring Rutgers credits to another university.
I think we have one with Seton Hall.
Is that a dual, is that a dual enrollment program?
I'm not sure.
Might be a dual enrollment or concurrent education program. This is not with a university, through the college board, so it's probably no different than our AP or other programs. These credits wouldn't necessarily transfer into universities, but they give you the skills that you need in college with classes typically much more research-based.
We do have a collaboration with Rider University for tomorrow's teachers program and those students are a dual enrollment, where they are enrolled here in our tomorrow's teachers program and they can receive credits to Rider University and to comparable program and other state schools. So we do have a number of those programs up.
Okay, next up, in your, I don't know if it was in your board packet or if it was shared electronically, but on the Budget and Finance Committee met a few weeks ago to discuss something called our budget guidelines for the seventeen-eighteen fiscal year budget, which we are in the process of crafting now. So we developed two, four, seven bullet point, seven principles that will guide the development of this budget for the next school year. I'm gonna read them out now for the audience and really show, speaks to how efficiently we try to spend the taxpayers' dollars. So number one, continue to fund all programs and services and foster educational excellence working within the confines of the two percent property tax levy cap per state law. Maintain staffing configuration and curriculum programs for the seventeen-eighteen school year pending an enrollment analysis at each grade and in each building. Continue to be conservative and value-oriented in the expenditure of public monies, respecting its effect on local taxpayers. Continue to provide financial support for ongoing professional development and curriculum review. Continue to derive expenditures from competitive supplier quotations whenever appropriate, official data, and actual expenditures from previous years. The concept of zero-based budgeting shall be followed. So just touching briefly on that, we don't start our budget process by looking at what we did last, what we spent last year. We start from ground zero and we build our budget up. It's not that you had fifty thousand in the budget line last year, so we'll start there and increase or decrease by a thousand dollars. We'll start off by seeing how that fifty thousand dollars was spent. Could it have been spent in a more effective manner somewhere else in our budget? Doesn't need to be in our budget at all or doesn't need to be doubled because that didn't get us where we needed to go. So these are the questions we're asking our directors, our principals, our supervisors, and so on and less too. Continue to ensure that budget and financial planning process is aligned with and supports district priorities and goals. That's what we do this year and the budget that we're developing now is going to support next year's goals, which are yet to be developed. And continue to fund the capital reserve account to finance specific improvement projects in our buildings. Any questions or thoughts? Number three, in your packets and on the agenda tonight, we have two one-year calendars up for approval. We felt this will help our parents, staff members plan their calendars ahead, so there's a seventeen-eighteen calendar and also an eighteen-nineteen calendar. So if they're approved tonight, we'll share them with the community later this week on our website and via some mailings. Also, in October, we had two weeks. One was a week of respect, the first week in October. I'm gonna share a couple of things that we've done in various schools. At Maple Road, we had an anti-bullying assembly called Stand Up Step In, sponsored by the Maple Road PTO. This kickoff assembly supports the school's full values and monthly character-ed themes. At McEpin, they had a different theme for every day of the week. On Tuesday, they did team up for respect, where you wear your favorite team's sportswear and you wear different clothing every day for different themes to show support for upstanders in the process. The third week in October this year was School Violence Awareness Week, which we typically call Red River Week. It's a nicer phrase, I think. I know at Hapshu Elementary, they had a special day where they wore war blue and they taught kids how to be safe online, to develop digital citizenship grade level by grade level and combined that with some literacy lessons in their technology labs. So they did some technology, some literacy, and some how to be safe online, some digital citizenship skills. And at the high school, there were School Violence Awareness Week. The Holocaust Studies Program had a profile of coverage from the Holocaust. They decorated the halls near room 242. Before I pass you off to our student rep, we have five students, especially to report, four at the high school and one at Marshall Hill. And now, Ms. Hogan is not here tonight, student council president, so we have our student council vice president, Ms. McCray.
Good evening, everyone. First, I would like to thank the board and our president, Mrs. Over, for allowing me to have this opportunity to speak tonight. So we have is our past events for the month of November and then our upcoming events at the high school for December. First, our past events, we had our marching band taking second in national championships and then third in the Yamaha Cup, as well as third in states. On the seventh of November, we had our career day, which is a great opportunity for students to learn about different jobs around them. We also had a band tattoo this past Saturday and that was a great chance for all the students to really support our military and our veterans and everyone. There was a park practicing trial thing that we had this past Monday, as well as this whole entire week is the American Education Week, which is basically if teachers would like to come into the school, they can support our students and really get to get like hands-on experience of what's going on. The freshman class, during the freshman seminar, they've had a random act of kindness sort of deal where they get to basically give random acts of kindness to the different people around them and then write what they did and post it on more than decorated and it's a really inspiring thing for everyone to see. The student council ourselves, we've raised about five hundred dollars for construction for a new P D A queen at Chilton Hospital. It's part of the Kids Helping Children project. And then for the Peers as Leaders Program at the high school, we had ten cows, that's what they're called, were selected to go to this teen summit program and learn about substance abuse and how to prevent it. And then our concert choir performed at Carnegie Hall, which was really an incredible experience, I'm sure, for everyone there. And then in addition, we had a wonderful year with our sports teams. Some of our leaders in that, we had the gymnastics team, field hockey, and girls soccer all did a wonderful job this past year. Our upcoming events for the month of December include, and the rest of November, we have Underclassmen Portrait Reaching Peaks and then we have this Friday, a blood drive for everyone, which is a great opportunity for people to really get involved in their community and help those who need blood. And then parent-teacher conferences will be next week on the twenty-second. There's a winter, winter, excuse me, winter choral concert on the first, which is a great opportunity for everyone to go and support our choir program because they're absolutely phenomenal. We have onsite decision day, which is wonderful for our seniors to get accepted to colleges and get a hands-on experience with meeting with people who are gonna be there and get accepted then and there. And then we have our ACT testing on the tenth, as well as senior choice awards coming up, a pep rally, another rec assembly, and finally a band concert to wrap everything up.
Thank you very much. I know it's a school night, so if you have to leave, this will be the perfect time.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Okay, that's all for me.
Mr. Novak, education report, please.
Thank you. I just want to comment briefly. It wasn't on the agenda, but we just left, I attended the CPAC meeting with Dr. Liz McQuade. She had thirty-three members in attendance for her open forum, which is a fantastic night. They really highlighted the collaboration between special education and general ed with a lot of work we were doing together to really build a cohesive unit and it seemed to be well-received. Parents there voiced some concerns and it was great that Dr. Hesney and Dr. McQuade were there to field their questions and be able to respond. I don't know if you want to add anything?
The other thing that I want to just add is just to say thank you also to the Special Olympics because they offer childcare. I think that that also assisted where they were willing to take students this way, the parents could be a part of our meeting. So I think that that, and as you know, Ms. O'Brien, that just helped to bring the, make it to be a larger body, which then gave us more information from those parents. So I'll probably report on that to the board just after I synthesize all the information that we learned and maybe at the next, you know, meeting or two, I can just give a brief report as to some of the things that were brought up and what we're doing to respond to it, so you're aware.
I like the fact that there's different timings because I couldn't attend the meeting today because of my work schedule, but parents can and they don't want to come out later, you know, so it works out very well that you can get people at the right times.
At different times. And we, and we did finalize all those dates that we came up with at the first meeting, so those are posted on the website for anyone that's interested to attend a future meeting. So thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And also following up on some of Dr. Anamon's comments about our district goals, we had a professional development day this past November eighth on Election Day where we were able to take some of our district goals and put them into practice. We really went after the idea of differentiated instruction. We began the year, I mentioned it earlier, at an earlier meeting, that we began with a speaker named Angela Myers at our Welcome Back, Welcome Back speech this year for staff, where we talked about the notion that all students matter and that's where you see a lot of the schools have You Matter t-shirts and that type of, that type of presence. I took it a step further this past week where we brought in a consultant to work with two of our seven, twelve departments to develop some common language and what it means to use differentiated instruction in your everyday classroom experience that worked with our science, industrial arts, and English playing arts department. We also had the remainder of our departments, grades, like I said, seven through twelve, working in a not typical sort of, sort of process. And I have to give credit to John Barnell, who developed the idea. He said he came up with it while mowing the lawn one day and I know many, many of us come up with our best thinking while, while doing that. And while mowing the lawn, he was the idea to provide a truly cross-curricular experience for our staff. So they developed a schedule. I'll just highlight a couple of things that we did. We took volunteers from each of our remaining departments, our vocal performing arts, family consumer sciences, mathematics, history, phys ed, and volunteers from each of those departments taught lessons in their content. So our math teachers taught a math lesson, our history teachers taught a history lesson and so forth. The classes were populated by staff and they were populated by staff members who were out of their comfort zone. So math teachers went to an art class and you had a history teacher in the art class, so if you forget what I'm sort of alluding to. So it was giving the experience of that student who is going into that class and not feeling comfortable with, with the content. So the art student who loves art might not feel great in, in the math class. So we're trying to give the staff members that experience of going in and I'll throw out a couple of names. I know Mr. Vetter won't be upset with me, but watching him sweat through an art project was, was a lot of fun. And Bruce Bialkin and, and, you know, some of the people who are not typically gonna be sitting in an art room, sitting and developing and working in that climate. The flip side, going in and seeing Mrs. Benson, I'm sorry, Mrs. Patterson and Mrs. Welch do a, do a math lesson to see the apprehension of those teachers coming in who knew that math was not their thing. And it was just a fantastic process and coming away from that, we had a lot of debrief activities where teachers shared their experience and, you know, had a good conversation about it and connected it then to students and how a student feels in that process. So it was, it was a fantastic day and that's just highlighting our, our seven through twelve departments. We had a number of activities. We had a number of activities in our pre-K through six that highlighted differentiated instruction. We had some specific math training in fifth and sixth grade for hands-on learning centers. We had training in grades three and four for our writers workshop process. They also met to, you know, they took some of the things that they'd been learning in the writers workshop process, and then they went back into their rooms, they worked in their grade level PLCs, and they developed the work that they were going to be doing for the next unit for their students. So real productive day out of them. K-1 and 2 had a busy day. We had our new science, industrial arts supervisor give a session to each K-1 and 2 staff member on the New Jersey Next Generation Science Standards, so gave them some hands-on activities. She had some kits that we're considering purchasing for some truly hands-on science in K-1 and 2, and, you know, the feedback was fantastic. We also had a committee, I've spoken here about the mindfulness committee a few times. Our K-1 and 2 also had training in mindfulness. We connected to our positive adventure language of Be Here, called Be Here 2.0, where we're providing students those moments throughout the school day to, you know, take a breath. And there's a great, Elmo, if you Google Elmo belly breathe, you'll see a fantastic clip that really connects to, you know, the idea of mindfulness in our schools. They also did some phonics work. So in a snapshot, we had a lot of work. That sounds like a lot for one day, but we got it done. We have our next professional development days in February, February 21st, where we're going to take the work that we did in this particular day and move it forward. So I just want to give a little nod to all the hard work that went into it. It was a truly collaborative effort, staff, teachers, administrators, everybody was all in the process of making it a fantastic day. So we have in the back tonight, I'm going to try, and speaking about the students who need to get home to school night, it's also a school night for all of our staff members. I'm just going to go around the room. What we have in the back of the room tonight are the Promising Practice winners, who were honored in Washington DC's National Forum on Character Education this past October. And as Dr. Anamone mentioned in our district goals, that character education is at the forefront of the things that we are trying to do, and I've mentioned it many times, that Character Ed is not a statement that our schools are perfect, or that any particular kid is perfect, but it's the structures and the processes that we put in place that win these awards and give us that nod. And we're very proud of the work that everyone's done in the back of the room here, and around the district, does the things that Dr. Anamone mentioned. I'm going to start in the far right. We have my UGL home team, UGL SAC program, the after-school program, who was honored for their friendship bench, and that is represented here today by Kim Walker, Heather Terry Egley, and Frances Bow. Next to them, we have Mr. Richard Dygoz and Frank Gebcheck from the McPeppin School. They're here to represent, and they won their Promising Practice for Operation Thank You, which was a veteran, was one of our many veteran honoring activities that we have throughout the district. On their left, we have Mrs. Metcalf, who is here to represent the, our Holocaust and Genocide Studies, and that was also mentioned in Dr. Anamone's report for some of the great work that's going on there and bringing awareness. On their left is the county, county winning lacrosse coach, sorry, field hockey coach. I get those mixed up in different seasons, I apologize. Our field hockey county championship coach, Mrs. Provost, with some players representing many things, our Philadelphia convention, taking that to a different level. Also, she's here for our West Milford Field Hockey, the work that they do in building team through service learning. So that's...
It's kind of fitting, that's not our pump-up.
It is, it is.
I almost started running.
So through service, through service learning, they've built a tremendous team atmosphere. They won a county championship, so something in that process is working, so, you know, way to go, way to go, guys. We also have Coach Androuli, can't be here tonight, but we have a very similar process in terms of service learning through a team sport, and that is through our cross-country sportsmanship run, that's an annual event run by Mr. Androuli. And on the left of that, and if Dygoz, Mr. Dygoz, you want to run over and stand with Mr. Gebcheck on that one? Oh, he can say, he can say. They're also representing the second board, which is the McPeppin Patriots, and they do a lot of work also with our four-legged heroes, the service dogs that often don't get a lot of mention when we talk about veterans. They did a lot of work with that, and we're honored for that as well. And our final board, and Mrs. Cullen, sorry, she couldn't be here today, but her board is on the end, and that is PK Honors Veterans. And I don't know if you saw in the paper this week, on the cover of Zaimer Messenger, where the Upper Greenberg Lake School was honored for a Veterans Day process. I just want to give the nod, you know, it was a fantastic event, we had it in many schools, Westbrook, McPeppin, and I think it's growing and coming into many schools, but I do want to give PK that acknowledgement of, you know, being the first in the district to do that at an elementary level, and really bring in the veterans from that particular community and give the children in that group, in that building, the opportunity to see grandma or grandpa, or mom or dad come up and be honored in that way. It's really a powerful moment to see that in action. So I just want to say thank you, and if we have a round of applause for our... Have a good night. Thank you. That's all, Mr. Free.
Thank you, Mr. Novak. Barbara, special reports and correspondence, please.
We have the minutes from the October meetings, I'd like to amend each one of them. The first line of the minutes, it was called attention, and it doesn't recognize Mr. Pooty as being Board President. So each one of the minutes are being amended to include his title in the minutes going forward, his title will... So that's the only amendment that I have to make. So it's the exact same minutes that you have, except the first line will read, "Mr. James Pooty, Board President, called the meeting to order."
Do we have to vote on that?
Yeah. I'm just telling you, I'm amending the minutes, and you'll consider them as amended. It is, it's my error, you know, my office. It should have been amended.
Motion and a second?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the amended following Board of Education meeting minutes of October 4th, October 18th, and October 24th, 2016.
Second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Terry. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'd like to abstain from the October 18th workshop, Special Action Executive Sessions.
Any opposed? Joe, legal report, please. Mr. Roselle, excuse me.
That's fine. I don't really have, I had no legal report today, although I do have, you know, any questions can be raised in the papers.
Okay. Presidency report. I guess first is congratulations to Steve and Debbie and Mr. Seidwitz for winning reelection.
Really tough, I'm Tanya.
And Debbie, you're the newest high vote getter in any election ever, so congratulations on that. Jamie, I want to thank you for, I'll do it again next month, but thank you for all your time and help on things. I'm going to piggyback on our student representative. The tattoo on Saturday was phenomenal. There was a group, what were they, Burton County?
Burton County Firefighters, and...
Pipe and drums. They did stuff with...
They called themselves the Shots.
The Shots. They did, they did stuff with bagpipes that I didn't think was possible. It was, it was really, really neat to watch. And I want to, I'd asked Mr. Borno and Dr. McLaughlin and the West Milford Band Parents to send me their contact information, because I'd like to send a thank you out to each and every one of those groups that supported our tattoo. I mean, it was just phenomenal. Again, Nationals, they took second in our division, which was, the band, it was, it was kind of neat, that was nice to watch. They were, we were beat by West Orange. They had some singers, so that caught the eyes of the judges, and they won first, but it was really nice. I found in the minutes of the meetings, I was looking for something, and back on November 18th, 2014, Board had a resolution to participate in Sustainable New Jersey. I brought this to Dr. Anamone's attention. I never remember getting any update or report, so to speak. However, I did see that Eric Segal was the person doing that, so I asked him, you know, what he thought about Colleen Weiss-Majestic, and he was going to talk to her, so I don't know if he has, but it would be nice to start moving forward with that. And basically, we're going to use our resources wisely, save money, reducing our impact on the environment, all of which ensure the future health, safety, and prosperity of our children. And safety is the number one thing there. Ms. O'Brien, you had a comment?
Yeah, I just saw something in the emails today. I thought that's the direction you were going in for the New Jersey School Boards Association, and a couple of workshops coming up in December. One's on a Thursday, one's on a Friday during the day, along the same lines of what you were just mentioning before. I thought that's where you were going, because I said, I think that's where you're going with these comments and even kind of in a different direction, so.
Okay.
But I figured I'd bring it to the attention of the Board as well.
But, yeah, I think we should try to move forward and be a little bit more proactive for Sustainable Jersey, I think.
I went to the events at the workshop on sustainability, and what some of the schools were doing really made an impression on me, and I think that maybe it's something that we can look at with Mrs. Majestic, and perhaps build a sustainable district and go for something that's called a green ribbon. If ribbon's for everything now, why not go for a green one? But it would be very, very good, very good, something to look at.
And that, that was, I just thought that when you were told, discussed that about school boards, and I found that, I just thought that that was, kind of go together, so. That's it as far as President's Report. Go move on to petitions and requests. Petitioners who requested to speak prior to the meeting will be first with five minutes for each petitioner for a period of thirty minutes, and then, time permitting, other petitions and requests, limited to five minutes per petitioner, will be allowed until the thirty-minute period transpires. Petitioners speaking during petitions and requests are asked to address topics listed in the agenda. All speakers are asked to give their full name, spell their last name, provide their address. Speakers may not use the names of students during petitions and requests. Did we have anybody who requested to speak, Barbara? Would anybody like to speak?
CEO, I'd like to close petitions and requests. Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Jamie, motion to adopt...
I'd like to make three corrections to the agenda.
Okay, adopt the agenda as presented. Your corrections, then?
First correction is personnel number three. Item is correct, the salary is incorrect. The salary is going to be... 104550.
Is that total? After this, is it extra stipend?
Plus a stipend.
Okay, that's the base amount.
The stipend, it's the base amount, the stipend is on top of that. So it'll be 106 and change, all in. The second correction is personnel number seven. That assignment is going to have two position control numbers. The first one is accurate, the second one is omitted. I'll add it now. And the third correction is on the bottom of page five, for education. If you look at the numbers, it goes 10, 11, 12, 11. That last one should obviously be 13. So it's the recommendation of the soup to approve the following resolution, it's the HIV resolution, that's number 13, it's miss number 11. That's it.
And then the hand carries.
And the hand carries, yes, that's right.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt the agenda as presented, as amended, including the hand carries.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Mr. Dwyer, education, please.
I'd like to move items one through 12 for approval.
Second.
None? Okay, roll call, please, Barbara.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Mr. Drew?
Yes.
Mr. Huber?
Yes.
Ms. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Dever?
Yes.
Mr. Pooty?
Yes. Number 13 will be after executive session. Mrs. O'Brien?
That's a May.
Personnel Student Affairs.
Got that right. We're going to move items one through 29. A hand carry will be done separately under Personnel Student Affairs.
I would just like to make special note of item number 29, guys. West Milford Cafeteria Workers are getting a raise.
Number 26, I'm assuming that's a volunteer.
No, they're not, they're not volunteers, but they're people that, staff members that participate in different events, and I think they get about $65 for the participation per event.
They get paid per event, it's just sort of in the pool of...
The football games or...
Yeah, yeah. Any other discussion? I'd also, you know, make note, congratulation to Miss Schwartz, I report that as principal of Westbrook. Okay, if there's no other discussion, roll call, please, Barbara.
Thank you. Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Mr. Drew?
Yeah.
Mr. Huber?
Yes.
Ms. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Dever?
Yes.
Mr. Pooty?
Yes, on everything, except no one number seven.
Okay, now we can clap for Dr. Schwartz. Okay, now we can clap for Dr. Schwartz.
I just wanna say thank you very much. I'm a Westmore alumni, Ruppentown, went through Maple Road, Mackin, and the high school. I now have a family here going through Westbrook. I actually just finished last year at that, and the high school. I'm very excited to come to Westbrook and come back home and lead Westbrook with phenomenal teachers and students through the next several years. So, thank you very much.
There's your hand carry for Personnel Student Affairs. I wish you the best of luck, my dear at Westbrook School. I'd like to make a motion to move Item Number Thirty under Personnel Student Affairs. Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please, Barbara.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Well, Mr. Drew?
Congratulations on that. It's very well deserved, and I know you've done absolutely outstanding job.
Great. Thank you, Steve. Any other? No? Okay, roll call then.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Mr. Drew?
Yeah.
Mr. Huber?
Yes.
Ms. O'Brien?
Absolutely, yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Dever?
Yes.
Mr. Foodie?
Yes.
That concludes Personnel Student Affairs, everybody.
Thank you, Mrs. O'Brien. Budget and Finance. Oh, Jamie.
Yeah, real quick, I'd like to make a motion to extend this time beyond eight-thirty, unfortunately. We cannot hold time constraints here, but here we go. Till quarter two. Let's try to make it fifteen minutes.
Second.
All in favor?
You did.
Oh, wait, did we, did we?
Late to a date.
Oh, okay, Maryland. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, Mr. Drew, Budget and Finance.
I'd like to move Items One to Five, please.
Second.
Any discussion? I have U.S. Foods from Allentown, Number Four. That's under the advice, I guess, of Pomp tonian for running the food services, or?
Well, we needed to replace the stove. We spoke about this in Budget and Finance.
Yes. Oh, you're right. You're right.
Instead of doing the electric stove, which was much more costly than going to the gas, we're putting in gas line.
But this came on recommendation of, of Pomp tonian, or just through the, through the beds?
There's certain vendors that deal with commercial products.
Correct.
And we get the prices and we do the evaluation.
All right. Any other discussion? Roll call, please, Barbara.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Ms. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Huber?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Mr. Drew?
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mr. Dever?
Yes.
Mr. Foodie?
Yes.
I'd like to move Item Number Six, please, list the bill.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please, Barbara.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Mr. Drew?
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Huber?
Yes, has to be a roll of stain, yes, three minutes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Dever?
Yes.
Mr. Foodie?
Yes, on the payroll, and I didn't get to finish going through bills, so I'm gonna have the stain on that.
I'd like to move Item Number Seven, transfer in the grant total amount of nine hundred forty-seven dollars and ninety-three cents.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please, Barbara.
Ms. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Mr. Huber?
Yes.
Mr. Drew?
Yeah.
Mr. Dever?
Yes.
Mr. Foodie?
Uh, yes.
What's my hand carry? Item Number Eight.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Huber?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Drew?
Yes.
Ms. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mr. Dever?
Yes.
Mr. Foodie?
Yes.
Now, if it's policy, I didn't tell them to go down to executive session, I didn't do it. Mr. Dever, policy, please.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the following items, items three through Twenty-nine first.
Second.
Any discussion? No? Roll call, please, Barbara, on three through Twenty-nine.
Mr. Huber?
Yes.
Mr. Drew?
Yeah.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Dever?
Yes.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the following items, One and Two.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please, Barbara.
Ms. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Drew?
Yeah.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mr. Huber?
Yes.
Mrs. Schultz?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Dever?
Yes.
Mr. Foodie?
Yes.
Special Committees and Liaison Reports, Mr. Robbins isn't here. Mr. Bailey, Safety, I understand it was a meeting last month?
No report.
No report. Oh, Superintendent's Roundtable, you?
There's a meeting on Thursday, November thirteenth. And as far as Passaic County's, hold on, sorry. November seventeen to Thursday is the SRT meeting, and Passaic County School Boards Association, December fifth at the Brownstone is a county meeting, a joint meeting by Passaic County School Boards Association and Passaic County Education Association. The topic is student-teacher regulations and how the new student-teacher regulations will impact our district. And Board members are encouraged to, or may register online for this training program if they would like.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have nothing to report on New Jersey School Boards Association. Mr. Drew, Legislative and Technology Oversight?
You know, I've talked about legislation and politics about following the, to this, so. Nothing here.
Okay, and I don't blame you. Mrs. O'Brien, Westmoreford Education Foundation.
Okay, a couple of things I'd like to bring to the Board and public's attention. The Westmoreford Education Foundation grants, we had extended, we changed the deadlines, we extended it. It is open for the Westmoreford Educational Community until November eighteenth, which is this Friday. Grant awards will be announced on December sixteen, two thousand and sixteen, and applicants will be notified by email. We will be meeting the week after Thanksgiving and to, to go over the grants, both individually and then collectively. To date, we have received grants from all of our schools and, except, and I, I'm, I'm not gonna, I might as well just say, except for the Highlander Academy, but otherwise, we receive grants from all of our, all the schools, elementary, middle, and high school. So I truly look forward to seeing what wonderful things our educational community has presented to us, and I look forward to making the announcements later this year.
Thank you, Mrs. O'Brien. Township Board of Education Joint Committee, we haven't had a meeting since our last one. Probably because of the elections, but I have the meeting dates and committee meeting dates for next year, and I'm gonna forward them to the town council. They can forward us theirs, and then we can set up a, I guess, every other month, unless we need something, you know, more, a little bit more time on, we'll do a meeting every month next year. And one of the things, Marilyn, I think the first thing we should work on with the Joint Committee is moving the poll in place to where you suggested. I draw a bye makes a lot of sense, really.
More given here?
I don't, I don't
Have it at PK School and then now School Boards.
Yeah, well, yeah, well, this year, it was just, it was a, it was a horror show, so it was probably a good thing, but next year, I don't, it's not gonna be a presidential year, so it probably wouldn't be so bad, but still, we should, I think that's our first line of business.
It's compliant, that building.
Yes.
I understand why it wasn't proposed.
Yep, yep. And they hold events there, so there's no reason why they, they can't have their poll in there, so that'll be the, that'll be the first line of business when, when, when we meet, I think. Other than that, that's done. Old Business, anything under Old Business? Mr. Drew?
I have discussed this before, and I'm gonna bring it up again, and hopefully we'll do some of that at this time. You know, as we try to improve education behaviors, we find that, you know, on the one hand, we try to encourage positive reinforcement, on the other hand, we're critical when things go wrong, so parent, for example, you tell your kid, get your elbow off the table, chew it with your mouth up, or don't talk while you're chewing. And over the years, hopefully, they get some, but what I've found is that positive reinforcement works way better than all of the negative reinforcement. Boss, coach, parent, and for all of those things, eventually, you get to the point where you wanna say, wow, you just did really great at dinner. You got all your math you've finally got. I have found, for example, that, you know, if you correct math homework or something like that, every once in a while, you gotta say, you're really starting to get it, you know? You're, you're getting good at math. And, and when you do that kind of thing, it, it, it builds in, the child, they start to believe it. And, and these are the kinds of things that actually encourage them to move on, and push a little harder. Now, I know that, and in fact, I've told some, you know, look at the top of the thousand public high schools in the United States. We find that those school districts make a concerted effort to encourage kids. When we look at our top Passaic County Teachers of the Year, and you talk to them, we find out, you know, they find ways to encourage kids to say, good job, you really got that. And these are the kinds of things that drive kids to, to, to work hard. And, and actually have much more positive influence on, on outcomes in all of the businesses. I've found that in coaching, you know, when you tell a kid, you did that lock wrong, you did whatever, you know, maybe they get it right, and then eventually, you say, teacher's really did a good job at that. That was a good game. It starts to feel a little better. Now, I bring this up because it's, it's just so easy to forget to do it. So much easier to criticize, to give the positive reinforcement, it's a positive reinforcement, we should actually move that forward. We had an event recently that I think is just absolutely outstanding, maybe I'll mention it, where we had some of our children invited to perform a karaoke. Now, I'm a musician, and my family's a musician. That is a lifetime achievement. There are musicians who work their entire life to get that invitation. It's a big deal because it is probably the most acoustically accomplished building in the entire United States. Now, it's very easy. You live in an area like this, maybe you've never been to the, that's really, maybe you've never been to karaoke. You go. It is so finely engineered, so finely built, you can hear every single engine. You can hear every single voice. There's a reason people want to perform. And I think that when you truly is a lifetime achievement, that is worth remembering for your entire life. You ought to write a letter home to every one of those children, and Andrew and I voluntarily do it. And as you go in their permanent file, that should stay with them forever. So I'm, I'm suggesting, I'd like to list the students, the administrators, the teachers who are involved in that, with their address, I'll write a letter. Any other Board member who would like to sign that one, if you'd invite me to do that? But this is the kind of thing, when you send that home to parents, they recognize the job that we're doing to their kids. Kids, and they build these files, they can do that in job application, they can use that in college application. I think it needs to be part of what we do, this standard work. There are things that we're doing in Westmore, and we're really not getting recognized. I think we're one of the finest, fine arts high schools in the state of New Jersey, and perhaps in the United States. I think we may be one of the best special education schools in, in, in New Jersey, and perhaps in the United States. And we need a written recognition. It should go to parents, the face should see it, the kids should see it, and the parents feel better about what we're doing. And now, this is one other thing that I would seriously like to establish, Paul's look at some of those, I'm like, are you kidding me? I believe we try to have a million people stamps in the United States, that's huge. That is huge, that deserves written recognition. Anyhow, that is, who, who can do that, give me that list, and frankly, I think that in the future, I'd like the Paul's, you know, if you come from the school. These kinds of things are just, of what we should be like.
We should talk about that after.
Mr. Foodie, can I ask Mr. Bailey a question?
Go ahead, please.
Legally, can we, as Board members, have students' addresses?
No. I was gonna say that.
I just wanted to make sure I wasn't
That letter should come from Dr. Anna Mohn, and the Board should authorize him to do that, and Steve, you can work with him on the letter if the Board authorizes you to do so, but you cannot personally send a letter out to the students. That's pretty simple.
Yeah. And I would like us to send it out. I can tell you, you know, I, I can't vote for the entire Board, but anybody who extends a contract, a bonus, raise, will only get my vote if we start written recognition of, of performance of the competition.
Yeah, and I don't think a letter to the students is a bad idea, but the Board should authorize the House to do it, and you can work with him to
But we need to start doing it. At least me and Ryan.
Mrs. O'Brien?
I'd like to add, if, if possible, if this is the direction we're going, I think it would be, it would improve the Board to have our signatures on that letter as well.
Well, that's what I mean by the Board authorizing, Lieutenant, whoever writes the letter is fine, but the Board should do that.
Okay, so you're saying we can throw a Johnny Hennbaum, okay, I wasn't sure, that's what you meant.
Forward action.
Okay, gotcha.
Piggybacking on, on, on that, the, the tattoo performances, and one of the sent tattoos
Would be another tab.
Out to the people who, who hold and perform there. Is that something that
Yeah, same idea.
Dr. Anna Mohn has it. I mean, we're not getting kids' information.
Well, I don't know what the tattoo performance is, but
You're a tissy costume. It's a concert, and, and there were, there were schools that came, so like, Hookton came and performed, and I wanted to send something to their Board of Education saying, thank you, and your students, but-
That's not the same thing.
Okay.
You can write that letter as board president, student addresses, or-
Yeah, no, I, I would like to write that letter and have the whole board signature.
Yeah, that's fine, that's not the same thing as, as what we just talked about.
Yeah, yeah. All right, just wanted to, just wanted to make sure, I didn't want to step on any toes or get any trouble.
Thank you, Rick.
Uh, I, I, I agree, Steve, it's, uh, it's, it's an important thing, um, and to go, I, I know I told Debbie, I, or I didn't tell you, you weren't, you weren't there. I told Marilyn, I know Carrie, I mentioned it to Steve, at Nationals, um, I, they have air grams, where it's like, you know, mom and dad's, you know, great job, Suzie, senior year, da-da-da, you know, go get 'em, that kind of thing. And I did one for the board, um, telling the Westmilkford Highlanders, we're proud of you, and, um, to kick some kilt. And I saw, and I put it from the Westmilkford Board of Education, so I just thought that was kind of a nice thing to do.
Is that why you hit me up for five dollars?
I didn't hit you up for five bucks, but I will now, if you're gonna-
For instance, in there, I'll be back, I'll be back in a little while.
But no, it's, it's things like that, and, you know, they came in second, I don't know, it wasn't, I'm not saying that that was the reason why, but it's a good thing to do, and, and let the kids know that we care, and that, that, you know, when they do a good job, that we're there and telling them so, so. I agree with you, Steve, and if, uh, if you wanna make that motion, um, that we direct the superintendent, do you wanna, is that something-
Make a motion to direct the superintendent to write this letter?
Yeah, that the board worked with superintendent to write the letters, congratulatory letters.
So, what was the event you mentioned before, in the Carnegie Hall?
Well, the kids were invited to, same Carnegie Hall, that's, that's a huge-
Yeah, a, a letter of commendation, essentially.
Yeah.
I have an administrative council meeting tomorrow, I think this is something that could be done at school level, that could do a little bit more, direct connect to the students, and they're probably more aware to these type of events, because it's more than just that, there's a lot of events we do, in addition to honor all those things like that.
Yeah, there are other things that probably ought to be recognized, the teachers involved in that should somehow, they'll double that up, even if it's yours, do you, or, or your, Mr. Knowles?
Yeah, no, I, right, everybody in favor of that?
You want a second, first?
Well, second, yes. You're second, okay, any, any discussion, or do we-
It's direction, so it could be all in favor.
Yeah, do we, all, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, um, anything else under old business?
Uh, yeah, I have something else to segue right in after Steve's comments. I'd like to throw a congratulatory shout out to Monica Heine, she's a two thousand and five Westmilkford High School graduate that just received her PhD in mathematics from Stevens Institute of Technology in Hoboken. And, uh, she is currently working at, doing medical research at Mount Sinai Hospital in New York. So, congratulations to Monica Heine, and, uh, good job.
Thank you, buddy. Anything else under old business? Okay, um, can we move on to new business? Oh, excuse me, all in favor of closing, uh, old business?
I'd like to make a motion to close old business.
I'm trying to, Jamie snuck me now, I hate it, sorry.
I'm Jamie.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, um, new business, is there anything under new business? Debbie?
Really quickly, and first of all, I'd like to give credit to this, to, um, Mr. Knowles. He had said something tonight that kind of triggered an idea in my head, now, every year, we have, and correct me if I'm wrong, it's called, like, Read Across America, we have guest speakers that come in, read to the children, it's a big literary week that goes on.
We do too.
And, huh?
We do too.
Oh, I know we do, right, I was trying to remember, was Read Across America or something else? I was wondering if we could think about doing something like, I, I can't come up with a catchy phrase at the moment, but something to do like math, science, or social studies where, you know, it's like a lesson that the kid, that we brought in, and the kids could teach us, or we can work with the kids, and something that's besides out of the realm of reading, it's very important to read, but if we're pushing something-
We, we do have numeracy night, uh, Family Numeracy Night, in all of our, the son? Family Numeracy Night in all of our buildings, in all of our elementary schools, um, I'm sure, um, I'm sure the board would be welcome to, you know, see them in action, you know, you go to, you're welcome back at all these events, and I think you really, um, enjoy what you see, you know, it's similar to during Read Across America Week, we have family literacy nights that take place. Families come in, they work side by side with their kids in a, in a session, um, similar, we did Digital Citizenship Night, and parents went session to session. Family Numeracy Night, it's, it's the same sort of process, they, parents come in with their, with their children, they learn some hands-on math strategies, some things that they can, um, carry back home with them. Um, you know, for example, taking a handful of apple jacks and using it as counters to teach a student how to divide, you know, you take a pile and, and count them out. So, it's, it's, it's teaching some hands-on stuff for, for parents who are, um, looking for a little bit of help in, in helping their students at home, and having a good time with, with math. And, and I know Mrs. Gertina would be happy for me to throw out that, you know, we all love math, and that, you know, we have to get past the, we have to get past that idea of, of math phobia, and Family Numeracy Night is one of those events. We also have, which is actually a great idea now that you're talking, during family, uh, during Read Across America Week, uh, we can probably incorporate, there are thousands of titles, thousands, like, exaggerating, hundreds of titles that are children's picture books that have math themes, Math Curse is one of them, um, Hundred Hungry Ants, there's a, there's a, quite a few, um, picture books that are available that teach math lessons, so we could probably incorporate that into, what do you think, Mrs. Walker, can we build that into our Family Numeracy Nights, or what? Reading specialist is what I'd throw her out there, um, but yeah, I think, uh, I think that would be, be a good idea.
Now, I, but, but my question, I, I knew about the math activity nights, because that started, like, in the late nineties, maybe, Marilyn, I kind of, I remember taking, I think you went with your girls, I went with my boys. Uh, I did not know those opened to the public.
Well, it's open to those schools, near the board, not the public. So, we can, we, I'm sure we can talk to that new council tomorrow about invitations to, invitations to the board.
I'm going, I'm going to love it.
Similar, similar like you'd be invited to a back-to-school night and that sort of thing, it's, it's an event we do in our schools. Family Literacy Night are, they're invitations to the parents and students of those, of those schools.
Very generous, hands on, it's enjoyable.
It is, I agree, I just didn't, I just, again, had the mindset that, you know, that, that it was more than a closed, by invitation, not by invitation, but, you know, it's for them, but it's good to know that we can present.
We also have, um, Pi Day, that's celebrated in our schools, that, you know, it's a, it's a day for, so it's a math-centered, uh, math-centered day in all of our schools.
And there's Weight Watchers Day next day. Thank you.
Anything else in new business?
Seena, I'd like to close new business.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we'll move on to petitions and requests. Petitioners who request, who have requested to speak prior to the meeting will be first for five minutes for each petitioner, for a period of thirty minutes, and time permitting, other petitions and requests, limited to five minutes per petitioner, will be allowed until the thirty-minute period transpires. All speakers are asked to give their full names, spell their last name for, by their address, speakers may not use the names of students during petitions and requests. Did anybody request to speak? Would anybody like to speak?
Hello, my name's Stephanie Markford, I'm just gonna say Westmilkford, I work in the high school, um, my son attends Westbrook, and I wanted to say thank you to Mr. Monaco, Dr. Over, Mrs. Van Zyle, and the entire staff, and all the students at Westbrook for the Veterans Day Program. I think you should know that my brother-in-law, who's deployed in Kuwait, and his squadron watched the whole program there, and are so impressed by what we do here. And my seven-year-old came home and couldn't wait to get on FaceTime with him to tell him everything that he had learned, and it was just probably one of the most wonderful programs that I've ever seen, and it was great because my sister, who was here with my two nephews while he's deployed, was able to see the program, and she was blown away, so huge, huge thank you to Westbrook and all the other schools that do it. And they should just know how much it means, not only to the veterans, but those who are serving now, to see our kids be educated on the veterans and what they do, and the sacrifices that their families make as well as them, so I just wanted to say thank you.
Anybody else like to speak?
Seena, I'd like to close petitions and requests, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Executive Session, Glenn.
Hey, at nine o'clock, I'll make the motion to go into executive session, for the purpose of discussing HIBs, personnel negotiations, and matters of appointment.
Second.
Okay, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we'll, we'll adjourn into, uh, executive session, there will be, um, action taken afterwards to vote on, uh, HIBs.
Well, obviously, I'm so excited. Thank you, welcome aboard.
And, um, we have one issue left to, to load on, the HIBs that we discussed, so, Carrie?
Okay.
So, you.
All right, move to, uh, approve the recommendation of the superintendent. Whereas in accordance with requirements set forth in PL two ten, chapter one twenty, one twenty-two, the Westmilkford Board of Education has received results of the HIV investigative reports on November fifteenth, therefore, be it resolved that the Westmilkford Board of Education approve issuance of written decisions affirming, rejecting, or modifying the superintendent's determination in the following HIV investigations. Incident Report number two seventeen slash E two unsubstantiated, two hun, two thousand seventeen E three unsubstantiated.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please, Barbara.
Mrs. Schultz?
Yes.
Mr. Drew?
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Huber?
Yes.
Mr. Dever?
Yes.
Mr. Foodie?
Yes.
I would like to do a [inaudible].
Second.
All right, it is now nine thirty-five, and there is a motion to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, everyone, enjoy your Thanksgiving, and, uh, we'll see you, we'll see you in December.
Yes.
Have a great Thanksgiving.
All right.